Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Any public input? Any public input?
Public input? I'm here for it. Okay, let me see. Hot off the press.
Beautiful.
Yes, right here. Thank you.
I guess hearing none, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes of the September 18th school board meeting.
So moved.
Number two. Any further airless corrections or additions?
It's okay to me.
All in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't here for it, so.
Oh, okay. Motion carries forward with one extension. Excuse.
I can tell you're going to be missing something.
The van requests are in front for Mr. Annan if anybody needs to sign them. State reports and fund balance action, Mr. Mangels.
The annual reports have been completed. Board members have seen the top of them. Of course, they'll be available for your perusal with the... I know I have one printed copy needs to go out and others probably via email unless you prefer otherwise. On the drive is a sheet that speaks of local school tax estimate and comparison. Since many of us don't read numbers well sideways, Patty took advantage of the opportunity...
Do you want the book?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I printed some pages for you. This is a sheet that once again has probably way too much information on it. It's a comparison of the last fiscal year to the new fiscal year and how all the numbers fell down. About the middle of the page, towards the right-hand side, we've got the calculated fund balance of $469,378, of which $80,000 was voted to go to capital reserve funds, From there, the number on this page shows a retention of $61,351. Bringing it down, total revenues and credits. The adequacy aid from the state has been revised. We received those numbers on Friday. It's down to $3,509,568, which is about $31,000 less than we have in the budget. We've also revised the statewide property tax. That's also raised locally. It's retained, so it really doesn't have a generous impact. And now the question is what you want to do as far as retention of fund balance. There are a couple of scenarios at the bottom.
Mr. Mangels, do you have extra copies for public? Are you sure? There you go.
Let me look at these.
So you're looking for a decision tonight out of what you're proposing on the bottom?
Tom, could you just, for the sake of people watching, could you explain those three options?
Okay, here are... The basic option is retaining anywhere from the maximum authorized of $270,000 to retaining zero. And you've got the entire gambit all the way between. What you retain reduces what you return. What you return has a direct impact on what needs to be raised in taxes in the fall. So if you retain the maximum amount allowed by law, the $270,000, you'd increase the amount of dollars that need to be raised by taxes over last year by $208,800, or about 29 cents. If you retain only $61,000, you'll raise exactly the same number of dollars as we did for the past year, which is $9,608,927, no change if they retain $61,000. And if you retain nothing, then you'll actually reduce the taxes to be raised by $61,000, or about 9 cents.
Good. Can I ask a question about the equalized valuation?
Based on last year's valuation, I have no...
So you have... So you don't know what this year's...
That's why we're looking at dollars to be raised. The raise is beyond our control at this point.
The fall 2016 evaluation...
That's on there.
...was $721,634.
$721,000, yes.
And I think at the last meeting that we had, there was an estimation that it could fall to $711,000. So part of the warrant article from last year was to make this decision with all of the information on the table. So it's not your fault that you don't have that information, but if we make... If you make the decision tonight, then we don't have all that information. That was part of that warrant article. So I don't know if there's any flexibility in saying if it stays the same, we will do this. If it doesn't stay the same and it goes down, changes.
Well, the potential, I guess...
Yeah.
Is that if we give all of it back, which may reduce the taxes, but we don't know the whole story...
Right.
It would reduce that 1332 to 9 cents less, all things being equal, right?
Right.
So...
That's why I was asking.
That's one thing. However, even if we do that, give it all back, in the future, you know, we do have to replace Lakeway. So that's potential for bringing the tax rate up again at some point in time. But we don't know that because we don't have all the information.
I agree. I'm just saying that that was part of the intent of the warrant article last year is to have all the information on the table and so everyone can make the decision. You know, I'm not saying one way or the other whether or not you should give it all back because you also need to have some kind of flexibility in emergency funds for yourself. And that 2.5% is truly an emergency fund because it can't be used for anything that was budgeted. It's truly an emergency. But you have some reserve accounts as well. So I'm not complaining. I'm just saying that I was hoping that we could have all of the information on the table.
So any more comments from the board?
Well, barring that we don't have the information yet, and who knows when we're going to get the information, but if the goal were to equalize the tax rate, retaining $61,000 to me doesn't make sense because that's not going to do anything in case of emergencies. So, you know, my goal is to try to stabilize or lower, then I would make the motion that we don't retain any of it.
I need a second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I have concerns because I'm not sure what that does to us going forward. Could you explain why you say that?
Well, if the goal is to equalize the tax rate based on last year's spike, you know, we don't know what the tax rate's going to be this year, what the assessment's going to be this year, so we have no way of telling. So in order to do due diligence to try to minimize any tax impact up or down, if we try to equalize it, this is not a very important at this moment. And if we equalize it, there'd only be $61,000 left. And if we retain, that doesn't do anything for an emergency, so why not give it all back? You know, and really hope for the best that the evaluation is, you know, going to be in our favor.
Okay.
I mean, that's all we can do at this point, is work with the numbers we have and do due diligence to keep that tax rate equalized or lower.
Well, this is another way or something to think about, is that on the town side, and I'm sure that the school board is familiar with it, that their year-end fund balance, the undesignated fund balance is very, very, very low.
We understand that.
Yeah, and so I thank you for keeping that in mind because they would do everything that they could to offset any taxes. So if you come in and help do that, maybe they can eventually get that fund balance up along that line. So I do thank you for considering that.
So there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded and has been further discussed. What's the pleasure of the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion unanimous.
Thank you. So let's see. Anything else from Tom? All of them with Adam. October 2nd enrollment.
Thank you.
There's a couple documents I'm sure you're aware of in the drive.
So are these the... Is this the information that's going to go to the state, which has to be in by the 16th or 17th?
Moment.
Okay. All right.
Well, we're up 30, just over a year ago. 25 to 30, we'll see how it all shakes out. It's positively significantly above what the projection was as well. That will help potentially, will help on the revenue side once that adjustment's made in early 2018.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, any questions from anybody? No authority to seek estimates and bring Lakeway up to current educational standards, I think. Do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I just, again, I want to be... I want to preface this by not asking no one to misinterpret this as a... We're not going to pursue other options with Lakeway, including new facility or whatever. But I do think that, we talked a little bit before, before we go there, we need to see what we have, what do we cost to fix it, what do we cost to bring it up to various levels of functionality? The entire plan, all the way from heating and AC to windows to, we know we have a concern with the second floor, making sure that that's addressed. And I, at this point, we need to put out some proposals. I'm thinking I'll work with George. George can help us with that, I'm sure. He knows that. Put together, put something out there, R.I.P., and see if we can, what we get in responses from architects to go into a thorough evaluation of what we have. So I'll pursue that and we'll publish that if the board wishes to do so now, at least within the near future.
Yeah, I think, you know, this has been an ongoing issue for many years. And we've done a lot of research, a lot of engineering study, but unfortunately, as time goes on, prices change. So, you know, I agree, we need to get a comprehensive engineering study, you know, to look at every option before we can present the case for a new building. So I'm all in favor of it.
I'll take a beer.
It's old.
How old?
Well, the only one we've done recently is the study on the second floor. The other stuff's...
We didn't do a whole building. I don't know what you're saying. Okay.
I can't believe someone looked at the whole...
Yeah, I was thinking of a beer.
That includes all the infrastructure, like the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's information the town needs to know when it comes down to voting for a new building.
Yeah.
Because we can't just have a... We can't have those questions unanswered, so... That's kind of fundamental.
Okay. Do you want a motion to that effect or a consensus?
Consensus is fine. Yeah, obviously, obviously, when we put something out and there'll be bids to look at, proposals to look at that point.
Rudy has a question.
You want to do that this year? You want to put the warrant articles in this...
No. We're just needing to get information.
We need to get information.
See what we...
Because if I'm making a mistake, last year or two years ago, you guys haven't engineered and not there, right? You know, go around Lakeway, they give you price on a...
For one portion of it.
It was just one portion in the second. That's what I thought, too. That's why I raised the question.
Yeah.
It was a stability study, right?
Yep.
You mean, you're going to do the study, send everything to the town and to... How are you going to work that?
We're going to do feasibility study to see if we need to, if we can afford to upgrade the building or move someplace else in the future. That's what we're doing.
Yeah, I think I think it should...
We're just giving him permission to check it out.
Yeah, we have a... I think it's just, you know, most of us do this in our own lives. We have a, we have a, we have an old car. We look at what is the cost to fix it, unless it's a special car, antique, right?
You spend this on money, you spend this on money this summer on Lakeway, right?
On fixing things, yes. We did. Yep. Heaters for the rooms and things we had to do, absolutely.
That was money that you guys threw aside.
It was out of our, out of our reserve fund. Yeah, out of our reserve fund.
Your reserve fund, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
Doesn't mean you've got to fill them up again this year, right? You've got to build up.
We'll see. We'll see. Too early to tell.
We're talking about more.
But there, yeah...
We're talking about peanuts.
But Rudy answered your question. The two warrant articles that passed gave authority to add, I think, 30 back into equipment, 50 to facilities. But then we'll continue. We've got some things we'll have to do this year, too. We do have, we do have money already to do some of this.
Okay, so you have consensus to do that. The next item on the agenda is a climate survey at Daisy Bronson Middle School, LHS and the Academy. For a number of... Quite a while now, the board has been concerned regarding the culture and climate of Daisy Bronson Middle School, Littleton High School and Littleton Academy. The board has approached a consultant to do this for us, and the proposed fee is up to $6,200. So I will need a motion to approve that expenditure, which will come out of consultant fees. Is that what you're telling me, Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Professional services.
So... Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question, if it's possible. $6,200 is just going to do the middle school, high school and academy. Is it not going to include Lakeway as well? Might be nice to get a pulse there, too.
Not this year. Not this year. Lakeway might be... Reports, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Update of scholarships awarded to the 2016-17 school board.
So at our class night, we awarded $259,500, 259,500. And after our class night, students received an additional $37,500 based upon online applications and non-school specific, I guess you'd say. So that's what we did at the workshop.
That's true.
It's very...
Yeah. It is.
That's from the Mantra Charitable Trust. That's who manages that, those online monies.
Oh, okay.
The other ones come from the trust funds in town. And then honestly, local businesses and local families contribute.
Yeah, for seniors, if you are not aware of the Mantra Charitable Trust scholarships, I really encourage them to look at the application. There's a lot of money there that is available.
And there's a lot of donors that, like the O'Keefe and the Gold Hubbard that you hear of donating to scholarship funds and they're not announced on class night, and that's because they go through the charitable organization.
Oh, I see.
So we don't know those students who receive those awards until after, it's in the middle of the summer.
Oh.
So people who have given to the charitable trust, definitely those awards are given out. You just don't, you don't care about it on class night.
And I think that that's one reason we want to bring it back, because this is, like I say, after the, after the awards ceremony, there's a significant amount of money after that. And again, it's an opportunity to thank those entities here local, there are many, right here in Littleton as well as within the region and the state, you know, for supporting our students. They're being put to good use. Is being put to good use.
Yeah.
They're already in school.
Okay. Thank you for the information. Bureau reports, personnel, facilities?
Nothing new.
Nothing new yet. And nothing new on policy funding? So I guess go to the student tennis report.
Okay, there's a couple items on the agenda, a couple other things I'll talk a little bit about. We did, we did have our initial meeting with our consultant on the competency-based education last week. Ellen was here for the full day, and we had four or five people, administrators, come over from the regional and spent a lot of the day looking at, I think, as much as I think Ellen spent the day looking at, getting a sense of where we are, what we've done. There's different, there are different stages everywhere. Some work has been done at, for instance, I think at one of the elementary schools over in Lancaster specifically, the regional. We know our own elementary school's done a lot of work in this area, but they also know that they want to take it to the next step. So, you know, tech ed, CTE program also has done a lot of work. We just, at this point, figuring out how to best use her time, her expertise, her resources. I did send you a link, you know, a chance to look at her work with the new initiative currently in the state. So we feel very fortunate to have Ellen Hume Howard with us. We're pleased that the regional SAU 36 has joined with us. We're working on this together. I think it'll benefit, at the end of the day, it'll benefit kids of both SAUs and help against shared resources, which is, I think, is something we're going to continue to have to do and want to look at continuously. So going, going forward, at least for the, for the immediate next few sessions, Ellen will work primarily with our curriculum coordinator, as well as with the curriculum coordinator from 36 to review documents, to get some of the work that we've done already a little bit better organized. And then we'll proceed with working directly with some teachers if we get later into the year. Options pathways for students, personalized education. Personalized education sounds a lot more exciting than options slash pathway. It's kind of a buzzword, so I'll use that. Personalization, but I really, I really, first of all, one thing I want to say about, about what I've asked our building principals and administrative leadership to do is to do all we can to improve the learning environment for all of our students. And I might add, improve the work environment for our teachers, paraprofessionals, other people who work directly with our students. So I, you know, I think, I think it's a balance, but I think that, you know, my, my goal is to make sure that students are not able to contribute a function in the classroom and take away the learning from others and we find ways to support them. We find other ways, other pathways, other configurations. We, we want, we want to, we want to educate them. We want to educate all kids. That's our, that's our call. That's our duty. I don't think there's anybody in this business that doesn't want to see the best for all kids, but at the same time, I think at times, at times, we've neglected our students who come to school every day and do the right thing. And we, I'm happy that the progress is being made. We've found different ways to, to help kids, educate kids and improve the learning environment for all students, as well as the work environment. Greg has been particularly active in this already this year. And without, without talking about specifics, we talked about it, in general, and I'm just asking him to share a couple of things with you that he's been working on to, to this end, again, to improve the learning environment for students.
So we're continuing to use the learn program that you're quite familiar with, I'm sure, from 36 in the afternoon. We continue to use Aussieware during the day. However, we've extended it into the student support center as well for kids who may need a little bit more support in a different environment to do their online class with. We're still using the Charter Academy. We're full there for those four contracted seats that we have. And one thing I think we're doing a little bit more this year than in the past is kind of blending the day for some kids where, rather than just the learn program, we're now putting them in some classes at school that they're, that they've shown some success in. And then also use the learn program for classes where they may, may need something different than the typical day program has to offer. So we have some students doing that. They may do some of their electives at school or career in tech classes at school. So for instance, if a student has an interest going into the computer field and they're struggling in their core academics, there, this one kid may be doing more of his old stuff online in the afternoon to learn, but he's taking some of the computer program courses at the school where they've shown some, some success. We continue to try to find ways that we can use tasks to help these students. We've taken a student that has a goal to be a mechanic, and we've moved him into Mr. Brodean's Task Time so that hopefully he can build a relationship and mentor this young lad through his next four years of high school. And we're looking at piloting an embedded learn style program during the day. We're still kind of working out the kinks with that, but we, we have all of our supports during the day. And we're asking kids to go to school in the afternoon where there's not a lot of support around for them. So we're trying to find some way to do some of the learn style program, but do it during the day and have students have the opportunity to work their way back into the classroom, whether it be one block at a time or for electives. Use, use the learn style approach with some internships to keep kids motivated and successful, so.
Thank you. Are the students assigned a task person? They are. So you take so-and-so and they say, Mr. so-and-so is your task person or Mrs.?
Yep, Monday mentor. So on Mondays, they're with that task person every week. And that person knows them academically, their interests, and can help them set goals and plans for their interventions and their enrichments through the rest of the week. So they may be an art student in art enrichment or during a day, meeting those needs on Tuesday through Friday of the week. So they're not with that, that task person every day of the week, just Monday unless they're assigned to them for an intervention or enrichment.
So during the week, they could meet with another.
They could meet with many different people. But it's to meet their academic needs.
And they'll stay with them up to three years.
Oh, okay.
So seventh grader, seventh grader will stay with that same task mentor through their ninth grade year, so that they have a chance to build a relationship and different with each other.
A relationship with the student as well as the parents.
Yeah.
So it's that point person as well for three years. You've got a common person to connect with.
I want to ask him a question about the trade school. Believe it or not, I've been delighted publicity there, my discourse, you know, you guys know, project to six. I'm in project to six. You guys do projects to six, because I know a lot of kids that they don't do nothing. They are wasted. And I'm telling them to come to Littleton High School and enroll, you know, this program that you guys have, you know, it's like the computer machine and stuff like that. Do you guys advertise that a lot? Do you guys do some advertising for these particular courses in the afternoon? Or it's just to put the student from Littleton High School? Just Littleton?
The learn program from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon, yep.
Doesn't mean it's about a problem profile or any other school. You cannot enroll.
We haven't, it's, we haven't done that before. There are some programs here they enroll in, but that doesn't happen to be one of them.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, I think, interesting comment, because I think, you know, as we go forward, there's a... You'll see some of this. You'll see schools that will, parents that will... I guess one thing that's a lot in the discussion is school choice. And I realize that's a little different political realm. But I think, you know, we, as I've said before, we need to be a player in that as well and offer things that will benefit other kids and families. This program right now is, we want to get it to where we do well with our own, but who knows in the future what the future might be. Yep, that's all I have.
All right. No further business before this public session. So I entertain a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make a motion to enter to non-public session under paragraph two, section three of the RSA 91A, colon, three of the right to know law, four, you pursue the hiring of any person as a public employee. Number three, matters of diversity affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Taking with us the superintendent, business manager.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
We'll call a vote.
Greg Cook.
Ken Watson. Millie Knotts.
Jim Mann.
Ken Woodson.